A commissioners meeting to order for April 15th, 2014 with the invocation led by our fine commissioner, Gail Mahoney.
Will you assume a reverend position, please? Our Father and our God, we come before you tonight to, first of all, say thank you. We are grateful because in your word it says, "To give thanks in all things." We just ask tonight that you would be with bereaved families throughout this fine city that have lost loved ones and others who have cancer and are still in the fight. Though we ask that you would bless our service people that are all over this world protecting our freedom. Bless their families. We ask you tonight to be with us during the course of this meeting. Let this meeting be conducted with your thought in mind. We ask all these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
At this time, I would ask Gavin and Garrett Clausen to step forward and please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we'll call the role, the Clerk-Treasurer of Deeds, Amanda Ryska.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Letchka?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Duckham?
Present.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Plachek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
And Chairman Chatwell.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We're at approval of the agenda. Entertain a motion, please.
Motion approved.
Motion and support. Any corrections, deletions? The Chair would like to make it known that under Item 7, Special Meetings of Standing Committees, the order shall be reversed. Agencies and Affairs shall go first, followed by Personnel and Finance. Any other items? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried? We've arrived at public comment.
My name's Tim Burns. I live at 208 South Grand Point in Brooklyn, Michigan. I applied for the open position of the Region Two Planning Commission. I've dealt with the Region Two Planning Commission as a citizen. I think it's very effective and very needed. I think that I would be an asset to the committee and would love to be on it. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Michael Mailard. I'm at 6076 Sanctuary Drive. It's in Leoni Township. I'm here to discuss the situation of the road commission pit that's up on Brills Lake Road and Whipple Road and the use of that pit and mining operations by Lester Brothers. They've been there for probably some four years, four-plus years. We moved in, in the development in the sanctuary in 2004. That pit was dormant at that time. I was, I later was aware of it. And when it was contracted to Lester Brothers to do operations in there, it was a tolerable situation for a short amount of time. And then in 2011, the road commission evidently signed an agreement with M.DOT and the contractor there where they brought all the busted pavement that they were removing on 994 east of Whipple Road. The citizens law on Brills Lake Road and Whipple really were exposed to a lot of problems with the concrete trucks going up and down the roads. And we had certainly dangerous situations. We had an overturning concrete road right on Uptike, right close to my home. That precipitated a petition drive that I went before the road commissioners at that time when they existed. We asked for relief, that basically after that project, that they would no longer lease out that operation to other industrial concerns and that the mining in that would be for the road commission's use only. I had 36 people on that petition. I presented it to the road commissioners and we never got a response and just assumed it was rejected. What precipitated later of recent time is that I was at the township, in Leoni Township, and on unrelated issues, I was kind of aware that the road commission property was zone agriculture. Certainly, the road commission has a priority on that, but the question I had at that time, does another person that basically has an autonomous operation in their heavy industry have a license to do that type of operation on agriculture, the zone property? Commissioner Rice, I had talked to him. And he precipitated certainly the road commission and the township to discuss the issues. Later, I contacted the road commission and I talked to Jerry Peterson and he was, he was, not on all the issues that I had, but he was very receptive and looking at really the use, if that should be used any further by a private concern. I had also talked to the township. They never, they looked at it from the standpoint of gaining taxes, for back taxes for a number of years, but they had not, and I've left them for an interpretation, a legal interpretation if they have a legal right to be there. The road commissioner, or the Mr. Peterson, asked me, because the last petition drive was two and a half years old, to do another petition drive. I did that and I had 40 parties on that drive, on that petition. I gave that to Mr. Peterson when he was finally available and we missed the April meeting. I'm going to be unavailable for the May meeting and so he urged me to be out here to present the situation as we have it. Basically, the operations are there on Whipple Road that we have-
Thirty seconds, sir.
Oh geez. We have Uptike Road that has problems with visibility. We have high-speed trucks that have gone over the expressway causing a dangerous situation. We have homes that are, have challenged, emotionally challenged children that have been, have had seizures from the traffic and-
Five seconds, sir.
All right. Am I allowed to come in the next?
Yes, sir. At the end of the meeting, yes.
All right, then. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
These are comments on Number L, Park's Approval to Purchase an Alcohol Permit and Enhancements for Clubhouse. I wanted to just make the board aware of a couple contradictions I've heard often from Commissioner Duckham, that things should be left to private enterprise, particularly with regard to recycling. And I note that the county is competing with private enterprise. Over the last 30 years, there have been any number of private golf courses that are now open to the general public. Originally, I believe the idea behind the golf course was to provide community residents with recreational opportunity to golf. The only private courses were country clubs, but that's no longer the case. And now, the county wishes to add a liquor license and compete with takeouts, compete with taverns, and compete with restaurants. I don't know if that is a philosophical position that the county has, that they should not compete with private enterprise, or whether it's selectively used. The second comment would be that this board spends a great deal of money on our Sheriff's Department and our jail, county jail. And I've been here through many requests from the Sheriff's Department. You know, there's GPS units, there's new vehicles, there's a new 911 dispatch center. And we spend a lot of that money patrolling our roads to prevent drunk driving. And the county is now going to purchase a liquor license to aid and abet that very behavior that we're spending other taxed dollars to contain or prohibit. Commissioner Chatwell, in steady session, I believe, said, "Well, we can enforce it against those bad golfers." You know, the obnoxious drunk, the person who throws their clubs or does things they're not supposed to do. But I'm only talking about the good golfers, the people you want to come to a course, the ones who go out and play 18 holes and have maybe four beers and then in the clubhouse they talk about the game. You know, they talk about the holes, they pay their wagers, they put their clubs in their trunk, they drive away. They're point one. And these are the people you want to return to your course. For instance, this commission gave money to the Grand River Brewery. And I go there and I had two beers when I was there. Monkey Mouth, it's an IPA, and it's a high alcohol content. And I went home 45 minutes later and I was interested in what my blood alcohol content was, just because I'm a curious person. It was point one nine. And so, we are giving economic development funds to a business, you know, in the amount of $200,000 to $700,000, I've heard. And we are preventing him from serving his customers more than one beer. Obviously, the real issue is with the state. I believe we need a more reasonable blood alcohol level content, like 1.2 perhaps, or 0.12, excuse me. But since that's a legislative issue and not something before this committee, this council, I think it is both a misuse of taxpayer dollars to approve the county to sell alcohol on a regular basis at the golf course. And I also think it is a slight bit of moral hypocrisy when we are patrolling the roads and preventing the various behavior that you're now encouraging. Thank you.
John Wilson. It's been previously reported that Phase One of the Cascade renovation would cost approximately $500,000. Last week, during a WKHM radio interview, Chairman Chatwell stated that the Phase One project would cost $900,000. That's a difference of $400,000. Could either County Administrator Olverton or any of the commissioners, please be more specific of the Phase One cost and an approximate date that Phase One will commence. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Bradley. I'm a Jackson County retiree. And the last time I approached the board was in the fall when you adopted the 2014 budget. At that time, you reduced our health care benefits. And since then, retirees have been meeting and we decided we needed to become more informed with what was going on so that it doesn't happen quite the same the next time. So, we will be attending committee meetings and board meetings. And we also agreed that we should identify ourselves when we approach. So, good evening.
First round of public comment is now closed. We've now arrived at Special Standing Committee Meetings, Agencies and Affairs chaired by Commissioner David Elwell. We'll go first and then Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting for April 15th. I made a mistake and forgot, under Communications and Petitions, Mike Millard gave us a document. Adam has scanned it, but Adam, you only grabbed the last page. Unfortunately, you didn't get the whole document. So, Adam will re-scan this and it's going to appear in our minutes. I need a motion to receive, petition for relief dated March 24th, 2014.
So moved.
We have a motion and support, it sounds like by everyone. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? There you go, sir. Your petition is now accepted also by the Board of Commissioners.
I understand I'm able to present these?
We've got it right here.
He has.
Do you have additional copies, sir?
That was a one-page?
No, I have an original of four pages.
No.
If you'd like to give those to us, we'll take them, sir. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Yep.
There was one page that I was missing on the petition and I ran out of my copy.
That's fine. Yep. Since that's the fact, I'm going to give this back to Mike. You can have this one. Mike, there's the original. With that, at this time, I'd like to entertain a motion of the minutes for approval of the March 18th, 2014 meeting.
How about?
I have a motion and support. Any corrections or deletions? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried? We've arrived at the consent agenda.
Motion to consent.
We have a motion and support. Any items to be removed or further consideration? Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 9B, like boy.
That will become Item 13C, Understanding Committees, Affairs and Agencies. Any other items for removal, for consideration at another time? Seeing nor hearing none. Are you ready to use the electronics? It should be appearing on your screen. The consent agenda passed unanimously. We've arrived at Standing Committees, Affairs and Agencies. Commissioner Elwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First up, we have a number of appointments. The first group being to the Region Two Area Agency on Aging. The first seat is, they're all expiring April of 2016. The first is current member Howard Griffiths, who is the recommendation from committee.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor of Howard Griffiths?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The second spot is currently occupied by Patricia Spink, who is the recommendation from committee.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Third and final position occupied by Arlene Shepherd, who is also the recommendation from committee.
We have a motion and support. Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We move to the Region Two Planning Commission. It is a new term expiring December of 2015. Mark Baker is the current member, did not reapply. And the recommendation from committee is Timothy Burns.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next is the Department on Aging Advisory Council. There are a total of seven seats that are open, all with the same expiration of terms of December of 2015. There were only five applicants and the committee recommended the five applicants. And if there's no objection, I'd like to nominate them all at once, which would still leave two open seats. And those are Joe Evans, Pat Spink, Dennis Peck, Arlene Shepherd, and Peggy Younglove.
We have a motion and support. Are commissioners comfortable with nominating the five and leaving two vacant?
Yes.
Any nominations from the floor? Seeing nor hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This next one is the Ag Preservation Board. It's a term expiring June of 2016, occupied by Greg Sanford. Recommendation of committee is Andrew Alexander.
We have a nomination, we have a nomination and support. Any nominations from the floor? Commissioner Alexander is asked to abstain from voting. Is anyone opposed to that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Please let the record show, Commissioner Alexander abstained. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the last one is the Street Naming Address Review Committee, among other names. It's a vacant seat and the committee recommendation is Commissioner Alexander.
Any nominations from the floor?
Mr. Chairman.
I heard Chairman, I heard Commissioner Mahoney. Any other nominations from the floor? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Leitner?
Alexander.
Commissioner Letchka?
Alexander.
Commissioner Rice?
Alexander.
Commissioner Duckham?
All right.
Commissioner Alexander?
Alexander.
Commissioner Mahoney?
Mahoney.
Commissioner Plachek?
Mahoney.
Commissioner Elwell?
Alexander.
Chairman Chatwell?
Alexander. Commissioner, Alexander won. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes the appointments. Moving on to the Equalization, it's called the L-4024 Equalized Values Report, which in Standing Committee, we forwarded that on to forward to the full board. It's a requirement by law that we approve it.
We have a motion and support. Are there any questions for the Equalization Report? Any comments by commissioners? Seeing none, I believe this is a roll call. Equalization report is passed unanimously. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last item is the awarding of the Jefferson Road bid to Michigan Paving.
Entertain a nomination, or a motion? Thank you. We have a motion and support. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Kind of odd for me to forward it. I'll be voting no on this. I had spoken earlier about my issue with this and it's not, not supportive of the project. My issue is that most commissioners, I'm sure, have probably traveled Boardman Road recently. Boardman Road's in terrible shape and prior to tonight's meeting, I had requested information from the administrator and the managing director of the road commission about when the most recent work was done on Boardman Road and importantly, who the contractor was. They did provide very copious information to me, including the timeline on when, what work was done. And although it appears that the most recent work, I think, was in 2003, the work was done by the predecessor company, I think, of Michigan Paving. What I was told was Thompson McCully, which was acquired by Michigan Paving, as far as I was told anyway by our road commission staff. So, I do want the Jefferson Road project to go through. The public is very much aware of the terrible condition of Boardman Road. It's not just potholes. The road seems to be coming apart. I believe it's likely beyond the warranty stage, but it's very unsatisfactory condition that it's in and I just really wanted to make the point with it. I hope Jefferson Road goes through, but I'm going to be voting no for that reason. Thank you.
Any other commissioner comments? Commissioner Duckham?
In that light, I wonder if J.D. could speak more closely to the contractor and get some more clarification on warranty of the work? Or is it too late?
Joe, do you understand what Commissioner Duckham would like?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
You'd have to bring it to their attention and sit down with them and see what kind of a warranty you could get out of that.
I guess, would you mind coming to the microphone? Thank you. For the commissioners' sake, could you explain the procedure that you just described?
Well, we would ask the Superintendent of Michigan Paving and, like I explained to Commissioner Elwell before, Thompson McCully is Michigan Paving. They were bought by Old Castle Materials, who was a parent company out of Ireland when Bob Thompson sold- when Bob Thompson sold that to them, and now the Michigan subsidiary is Michigan Paving, and that's why they have that name, even though they are the old Thompson McCully. And they've done just millions of dollars' worth of work around the state and elsewhere. And on Jefferson Road, what we're getting is about an inch and three-quarters of asphalt overlay down the road, and then your chip seal and fog seal on top of that. So that is going to protect the asphalt, and it will slow down the cracking that might come through at a later date. If you didn't have the chip seal, you might see those cracks a little sooner.
Mr. Duckham, does that answer your questions?
Well, not exactly. I mean, we have Boardman Road that has really come apart, and we have the same company.
Well, I'm not sure, you know, like I put in my history of Boardman Road.
Commissioner Elwell?
No, I didn't mean to interrupt, Joe. I just wanted to let you know I wanted another point. Go ahead, Joe.
One of our former Road Commissioners saw the work that was being done on M-60 a long time ago, and he liked this product. And then he recommended that we try it out on Boardman Road. And we did Boardman Road, and we also did Page Avenue at the same time. We just didn't have the issues on Page Avenue like there were on Boardman. And sometimes the material that comes out of the mixed design, or that the construction and technology people design up in the MDOT offices, sometimes are not good materials. We've gone, they've eliminated a lot of mixes over the years because they just didn't pan out. They weren't that good. But there are projects that go ahead that these mixes were in place, and then they happened to get used, and come to find out that they weren't as good as everybody thought. You know, they've tried styrelfinum and rubberized material, and crushed-up porcelain, and a lot of other things, just trying to get your pavements to last longer. And I think this was one of those. It's called a Nova chip, where it's put down very, very thin, and it's got large coarse stone in it. So the water gets down into the layer of the Nova chip, and then it, and then the grade takes it over to the curb, because you pave it higher than the edge of the curb. So when the water goes through that asphalt layer, then it exits onto the gutter pan, and then it can get to the catch basins. You wouldn't do it on a road that didn't have curb and gutter. You would do it on a road that does have curb and gutter for that reason.
Well, a couple of comments, Joe. I would agree, if they tried it on Boardman, and it came apart, and they also tried it about the same time on Page Ave., which is heavily traveled, and it didn't come apart, then something was wrong on Boardman Road, I would say. And I typically subscribe to the KISS principle, which is keep it simple, stupid, and, for me, anyway. And I think I had asked this before. Why do we not just reach out to them and ask them to come look at this? I mean, you can clearly tell it's not potholes that are there, it's separation of the product from the underlayment. And I think the Road Commission has probably spent time out there recently trying to make it better. That's not working, and it's just a mess. And it just makes sense to me, I'm not being critical of anybody, but I would think it makes sense just to reach out to the company, have them come look at it, and see if there's something they can do. They're a huge company, they do a huge amount of work. I don't know what the amount of expense was for Boardman Road, but if that were my work product, I'd be embarrassed by it. And, you know, we're told that these are pretty much boilerplate things, that we have to rubber stamp for approving these because they're by MDOT Jefferson Road. But the reality is that it's a crappy, crappy situation on Boardman Road that this company did, and I won't vote for their work here in the county again, I don't think. And I just would ask that somebody reach out to them, have them look at it, and see if there's something that they're willing to do with it. I hate to think what it's going to cost us to fix it, but we can't leave it like it is.
Okay, I'll get with Jerry, and we'll have that discussion.
Commissioner Rice?
Thanks, Joe. This brings up a point. Has this company done work since it's been out on Boardman Road?
Yeah.
For Jackson County, correct? It has?
Yes. They've done a lot of work for us.
Okay. And from your standpoint, an engineering standpoint, their work has been what?
All the contractors have been good, whether it's Michigan Paving, or Barrett Paving, or CND Hughes.
Okay. So this may be more of a matter of the material they use on Boardman Road than actually their, they're actually their work itself.
Without looking at test results and some things like that, I'm not sure I could answer that question.
Well, I, at this point, I agree with Commissioner Elwell. I think we should at least get an answer to that, since just what you just said, Joe, we don't really know for sure.
Okay.
And Joe, thank you for the document that you forwarded with all the information on it.
You're welcome.
Any further questions, or J.Dot? Seeing none, if you'd like to vote? Pass seven to two. Commissioner Elwell?
Don't wait to report, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Standing Committee Human Services chaired by Commissioner Alexander. Commissioner Alexander?
Thank you. Human Services Committee has no business to bring before the Board.
Thank you. Standing Committee Personnel and Finance chaired by Vice Chairman Phil Duckham. Commissioner Duckham?
Yes, Commissioner Chair, we have one item of business tonight. That's J.C.Dot tractor purchases.
Can I get that motion?
Yes.
We have a motion in support. Seeing none? Would you post the vote? Passed unanimously. Commissioner Duckham?
That'll be all tonight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any unfinished business to be brought before the Board of Commissioners? Seeing none? New business. Administrator Controller, sale of the Woolworth Building. Administrator Overton?
Thank you. Tonight, we're seeking authorization to go ahead and consummate the sale. We have the closing scheduled for the 24th, 10:00 a.m. to consumers for the price of $200,000. I'm just seeking permission to sign for that.
Any more, any Commissioner comments? I would, I would like to let the Commissioners know that originally, when we purchased the building, it was for $200,000. I think it's very good that we're getting our money back out of it after utilizing the property and keeping it as a downtown asset. The authorization passed unanimously. We've returned to the second opportunity for public comment. This time, it will be for three minutes. The Board of Commissioners will not be answering questions, but if you do need answers, please get with Deputy Administrator Adam Brown, and he will get you the response. We've arrived at the second time for public comment.
Michael Mailers? I just wanted to highlight that the real reason that we're at this point with Lester Brothers is that he's increased his operation to really year-round. It has been early in the morning, before 7:00 o'clock many times. And tonight, it's been snowstorms, single-digit weather, that trucks have still gone up and down the road carrying material or bringing material in. What I do ask, if there's a number of people on the petition that are very passionate, would like to speak to the Board, and they would like to come to, hopefully you would put this on the agenda item for May. Mr. Peterson, I know he was going to appear, and I, as I said, I'm not available. That's why I wanted to bring it, bring that information and the documents I've given you for you to review and certainly be aware of all the situations that I've tried to put the history together on it. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Michael Way. I'm your appointee to the County Parks Board. I'm also the Chair of the Parks Board. I wanted to thank you for supporting our liquor license and your confidence in us that we can do this and do it right. But I also want to reemphasize to the Board and to the community that this liquor license is just a small piece of the big puzzle that we're doing at the golf course to try to bring the golf course back to one of the top public golf courses in the state of Michigan like it was in the '70s. And like I said, this is, this is just one little piece that's going to help drive us to get to that point. So again, thank you for your support, and thank you for your confidence in the Parks Board and the Parks Staff.
My name's Tim Burns. I just wanted to thank you all for your support.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Public comment is now closed. Provided a Commissioner comment. Commissioner Elwell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think most people here probably know the passing of Karen Donegan, but I think it warrants mentioning Karen was a great person, did a great amount of public service, served as an elected official, which is not always easy, and will be sorely missed, and just ask, keep her family in your thoughts and prayers.
Commissioner Duckham?
Yeah, I'd like to compliment Commissioner Elwell and Commissioner Rice on their sharp dress tonight. They look pretty good.
Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we have no closed session, so we are adjourned.